Now we'll go ahead and get started. The college meeting in order. Secretary's report, actually before we start.
Chairman of the committee, in the answer to the meeting, we've been made aware that this latter is not be present. Actually, he showed you, we can recover him live. Mr. Getz indicated that his work schedule would prevent him to be here. Mr. Baranza, same thing. Mrs. Mitchell indicated it was her anniversary. Although her husband was here earlier at lunchtime, he didn't mention that, so we're a little bit concerned about that. And James Frum indicated that he came up early to monitor the form of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda, secretary's report. If Ms. Getz is not here, I will put people forward for a vote.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and second to approve the minutes for September 19th. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries and minutes are approved. Treasurer's report, Ms. Oger.
Yes, in the folders this evening, there were two treasures reported. The first one was for August 31st, 2018. The total was at the end of August, seven million, five hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. We had mainly forty-two, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars critical sets of general funds and one million ninety-five thousand twelve dollars in my essential project funds. You see that there were some expenditures out of the project funds from the typical during the summer for the summer projects that we have going on about the school. Also note that the member assessment were starting to come in in the month of July. You'll see they were all completed within the month. And in chapter seventy, we actually have two payments, the one for June 30th and the one for the end of July. I don't know if anybody got any questions?
Will we accept this presentation?
Second. Motion made and second to accept the treasurer's report from August 31st. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Also included is the September 30th report. In September, we had six million five hundred ten thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And local funds were five million one hundred eighteen thousand and nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. And project funds were one million one thousand four dollars and nine cents. We had three tables during the fall of September. That happens once a quarter or so. That means an impact on our expenditures, which are slightly higher than the last ones. But everything is still on target and on target. We also had some more spending out of project funds for some of the finalizing of the summer project. And our interest income still come in at relatively good pace in comparison to where we were the previous year. So we seem to be on budget for collecting our interest income. I meant to mention it the last month, too. The last month was seven thousand dollars and this month was fifty-three hundred. So we're doing well so far this year.
Any questions?
Will we accept this presentation? Second.
Motion made and second to accept the September 30th treasurer's report. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Oger. Next up, Logan and Isabella.
Hello. So we have a couple of updates for you guys. First up was homecoming week last week, which was really busy for us. We started out on Wednesday, we had our student council meeting. We did workshops with all of our general counsel to help them build their leadership skills. There was two members of the E-Board, we worked together as a group and they did a rotation. And then Thursday came and Saturday the bonfire was postponed to a later date. We're still waiting on that. But our E-Board had some bonding time, which was really helpful for us. And just a good thing before the long weekend. Friday, we had our officer shop, MASC officer shop that we attended in the morning. We couldn't stay the whole time, so we'd get back to pep rally. But there, they really put a focus this year on Special Olympics. And we're hoping to get more involved with that with the Milford High School. They have a swim team for Special Olympics that we want to volunteer at. And then we came back for pep rally. We want to thank facilities and everyone for helping efficiently clean up the mess so it could still go on. It went really good. For everything that went wrong that day, I thought it was a really good pep rally. And then our dance sold out. We had a wonderful dance. And then Saturday, even though it was quite chilly and rainy, we set up for the decoration, with decorations for all the games and it was a great weekend.
We also have a fall conference update and we'll be hosting a conference on Thursday, November 7. And we are expecting approximately 700 students from across central Massachusetts. And the theme of the conference this year is the game of leadership. So we'll be decorating with board games, video games, et cetera. And some other updates are, we had the freshman elections. So there are officially class officers for the freshman class. And we had 10 student council members volunteer and help out for that. And on October 22nd and 23rd, there will be the Dig Pink volleyball games. And we are planning for the Turkey Run and holiday drives already. And we have already received Turkey Run donations from members of our community.
Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to convey appreciation and congratulations on behalf of the leadership team and school committee for the, just a full display, cooperation, school spirit, from pep rally to, you know, the sporting events all through the day, everything. It's graduates returned, other members of the public complimented, both Mr. Steele, myself, and other administrators on the turnout, if you will, and the support. It continues to be the pride that people take everywhere they go. But it kind of begins with you guys. And, you know, congratulations and thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Had a great night. Next up, Mr. O'Neal.
Oh, I know, Mr. Malat.
I was, sorry, Mr. O'Neal. Mr. Malat.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm a talk talk for multimedia communications program. We have here a handout you can send around and talk about our curriculum throughout the four years.
It's okay.
We have several websites that we use. And on the back of that is a link to the multimedia, PBTmultimedia.com website that has a lot of our curriculum materials and links to examples of student work. So I'm going to show just a little bit of that right now. When you look at the website, there is a section on it for curriculum. And this is a great tool for us to communicate with eighth graders who come in, their parents, and exploratory students, as well as current students, their parents, about expectations and what we actually doing. On the curriculum tab, there is a link to some documents that detail the different parts of our program. The timeline is a spoken sequence, which is kind of summarized on the back of that card. We also have some information about the design thinking process that we use. Our shop is a little different than other shops. There is a right way to wire an electrical outlet. There is a right way to replace the brake pads on a car. There is not one right way to create a code drive fly off a Dave Meridian. And so our students are challenged and the teachers are challenged with trying to evaluate and teach those kinds of skills. So one of the things that we use is the Stanford Design School model. This is a problem solving thing they use at Stanford Design School for engineering, but we find that it works very well for our students. Empathy is the first step. Who is your target audience and who you're designing it for? And then defining the problem. You can't solve a problem until you define it. And then they move through coming up with ideas to prototyping and then implementing the idea. In addition to that, we have other materials on here that I'm not going to go through in detail. Other than rubrics, we have department rubrics that are on different aspects of our program, including creative process, branding identity, there's web design rubrics in here. And all of these rubrics are designed so that everybody is on the same page as far as how the evaluations are going to be conducted. So we often will take pieces from each of the rubrics and combine them together for different projects so that amongst the faculty and the students, everybody knows what the expectations are. It also is very useful when speaking with parents about expectations and what they might expect if their eighth grader is interested in our program. We also have a blog. And the blog has student work on it. And that's really what I'm interested in trying to show today. This, we are constantly updating this with actual student projects. Whenever eighth graders come in, we tell them, go look at this, this is what we're doing. If I could show a couple of these. One of these is the evolution of our shop. It's been a little while since we did a presentation here for this. So our shop has changed a lot. There was a time when we were a graphic communications shop and the actual printing process took up much of the time that we spent. Now we use digital presses and most of this is a pressable platform. And so we focus on the design aspects of graphic design. We also work in multiple forms of media, as the name implies, multimedia communications. We focus on communicating. And if students know how to communicate, they can adapt that communication for multiple forms of media. We also have this wonderful studio that we have now where we can do photography and video. And this is some of the students that are working in there. Some of these projects are on the blog that you will see. This was our classroom. And we had a lot of students jammed into a very small space. It was very difficult for them to see smart boards, to do direct instruction. However, now this is the classroom. The two rooms together have been added. You can see this partition here is where the wall used to be. It's great. This is the underclassman classroom. And the best part about this is everybody's facing forward. With the underclassmen, we're doing a lot of instructional workshops where they're following along with an exemplar. And they have to follow what we're doing so they can learn the skills associated with it. Once they become juniors and seniors, they're more specializing in certain areas and doing things that they're more invested in. There are some projects on here. This is a freshman project, we can clone these, has some photography, but also some layouts. And it just gets them, this is kind of a fun project, where they work with Photoshop as well as photography. It seems pretty simple, but one of the challenges is with the photography, they need to be thinking about where the light is coming from, where the shadows are, since they're combining several images together. It helps them to start honing their photography skills as well as Photoshop skills. We also have a YouTube channel. On our YouTube channel, we have videos that students have created. And there's many, many here that you can check out if you'd like. The one that I'd like to focus on here is this, No Species Left Behind. The reason I'm going to show you some of this is because this is part of a project we're doing at Juniors. It's an infographic project. So the first part about it is they're creating a poster that has information about an issue or a topic that they're interested in. And then the challenge is to use After Effects to change this static printed material into something that's a motion media presentation. And so this video is an example of how the student who created this poster turned it into something that is motion media. The other videos that we've done, other video projects. And I'd like to mention that, you know, Madison Durand is here. She's one of our graduates from the spring. And I didn't know she was going to be here, but she's here operating one of the cameras for this meeting tonight. Tiffany Bryant Pollitt. It's nice to see her. Also Mason, Logan. Logan is one of our students who's also a co-op. He's at Milford TV. And he attended Skills USA national competition, which I'll talk about in a little bit. This is another video that was created by one of our students for the Dog Offense Humane Society in Douglas. My daughter had been volunteering there. We actually got a dog from there. And in talking with Ron, the gentleman who runs the place, he was looking for a way to communicate what they do and to recruit new volunteers. So we, this is a very involved project. We went to Dog Offense several times, talked with them, what they eat, with their video. We did shots of the facility on another day. And we went to River Ben Farn, where they had a fundraising event. One of our students has a drone, as you can see, he used his drone for some great shots for this. They ended it together and Ron was very happy. And they're using it on their website. Moving on, as I mentioned, our co-op, some of our students are out on co-op now. We have a little less than we've had in the past. Some of our employers have hired, the students have graduated and so they don't have a position for students any longer. But two of them in particular, we have the print copy center. Right now, we have two students that are out there during junior year. All of the juniors rotate through the print copy center and they do all the jobs in the copy center. When they become seniors, we have been recruiting three or four students. We found that it was a little too many. So now we have two in there that work there full time during their senior year with Mr. Mayo, doing coffee jobs for the community, for the school, and for other clients that come in. We also have, as I mentioned, Logan's at Milford TV, working co-op. And just this week, I went to the Municipal Policing Institute, which is in Grafton. They're an organization that provides instruction for law enforcement professionals on new techniques, new policies, and things that they need. And Logan and Mason were, went to Skills Nationals for digital cinema. And so Mason is also involved in all kinds of things at Municipal Policing Institute, from web to video to print materials, helping them to communicate their message. Helen of Troy is another one that we've had in the past. They do a lot of international products like Pure, water purification, Braun. Staples has been an employer in the past, as well as the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce and Dynisco, which is a plastic extrusions company in Franklin. We just completed a video for them. They needed an instructional video for their, one of their products. And they just asked us for the script because they need to translate it to Chinese because many of their customers are in Asia and they need to be able to communicate the ideas with them. So I'm going to try and finish up by talking about some of our graduates. Oh, we also do Adobe Certified Associate. This is an Adobe certification, it's an industry certification. Last year, the vast majority of our students got at least one of these certifications. Many of them got two or three. Madison, how many did you get? Certification?
What?
Adobe?
Adobe, I got Photoshop Illustrator in this one.
Those are the three that most of our students get because we spend a lot of time on those. The other ones are available. And many of our students say that it gives them a very big advantage in the world of work, but also in college. I had a story that someone related to me about one of our students, Lindsay Ferreira, who just graduated recently. And she had a class on Photoshop and she knew more than the teacher and was teaching the teachers some things that they didn't know. So just some of our students. I just grabbed some students out of the last six years since we changed the program around. Joey Petrillo, who graduated in 2013. He's working at Pentagon, New York, doing industrial design. They're a large design company there. Tim Shadia, who graduated in 2014, is at Ubisoft, they're a video game design company that's in Montreal. Ella Tamagney is at Massart right now, but she's also working, doing some fashion design for some of the businesses on Newbury Street. Eric Collusian, who went to the Fashion Design Institute of Marketing in Los Angeles. She's working for Urban Outfitters. She had been working for Old Navy, but she just got hired by Urban Outfitters. She was designing clothing. Eric Minas is at Drexel University, graduated a few years ago. And he's, his major is user experience. And Sophia Zicello is at SCAD and she's studying motion media. And Connor Zisk, who graduated last year, who worked on that Dog Offense video, is at URI. He's studying film. Finally, Skills USA, we've, for the last six years, we've sent a student to Nationals for photography. One of our students in 2016 got the silver medal in photography at Skills Nationals. This year, for the first time, we were able to send students for multiple competitions. We sent someone for photography as well as advertising design, which was the first thing for us. And Logan and Mason went for digital cinema. It was a great experience. I've been here at the school for a very long time. And it's the first time I've gone to the Skills Nationals. And so it was a good experience for me as well to get to see what the students do. And it certainly will help inform what we do to prepare students for that kind of a competition. That's all we have. Any questions for Mr. Malat?
Just wanted to make, you had a picture there of what the shop used to look like.
Yes.
It looked a little bit, a little bit tight, a little crowded.
Yes, it was.
How many years ago was that?
Probably seven, seven or eight years ago.
And at that time that you had that class, but then you've now opened up and it looked like a very live space that you have now.
Yes.
How was the attendance been? Has it been because of a better facility? Does it augment that right away? You're going to add more kids?
Absolutely. So we have about 25 students in each grade. Before, we were, that shop that I showed where the students were jammed in, that was 18 students.
Okay.
So we've been able to expand the number of students that we can take into our program. And that's great because having that space, that room too that is now expanded. We have an area in the back with some tables. So a lot of the things that we're doing, like I did show stop motion, we do a stop motion animation project. And that, they have to create the characters and the sets and everything. So a lot of work on those back tables away from the computer that happens with the project. You know, Madison too, often, Madison's a great illustrator. She would often draw something by hand and then bring it into the computer for a lot of the time that she do. Many of our students use that area in the back for that.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Malat? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now it's time for Mr. O'Neal. I did what I could, he stopped me.
I feel like, the analogy now is I feel like a baseball player getting up to bat after the, the All-Star just hit a grand slam. And I'm sitting there saying, I don't like that now.
Well, thank you.
I was introduced as this one.
I've got a, I've got a piece of paper. I should have caught you. The great thing about, I, you know, I was thinking, walking down here, you know, becoming a, for a number of years, and how amazing it is to come, but always amazing when I, and I knew this was going to happen beforehand. And I sit there and like, I'm in the academic world all the time. You know, and I know the kid, I talk to the kids a lot, so I know what they're doing. You know, and I go and visit them in their shops to give them work and stuff like that. But to, but to see it like that, you're like, dang it. Like really impressive. I was feeling bad, I was using NoteCads. I was telling both of us, the last time you saw me using NoteCads. You were nervous. I've known you for a long time. He's off the cuff type of guy, so he had NoteCads. I knew. Well, hello, everybody. Nice to see everybody. I'm here to, two things. One, to give an update on the 2020 trip this, this coming spring to Austria, Germany, and Switzerland. And then once that is done, and then to discuss and put up for votes the trip for next year, 2021, to Berlin, Prague, Krakatoa, and Budapest. So, so far, as always, I'm in constant contact with the EF, making sure that everything is running smoothly and keeping in contact with the students and making sure that everything on their end and just really making sure that everybody's on the same page and stuff like that. Always communicating with EF about, you know, any safety concerns that we need to be aware of. Last update from EF, everything on their end is up to date. You know, the trip is running smoothly. So far, it's running smoothly. Everybody is, you know, there's a full bar ahead, ready and willing to go. The kids want to go tomorrow, you know. But other than, other than keeping them settled down and focused, right now, you know, everything really won't get ramped up for this trip until, I would say, like December, January-ish, when, when things really start to have due, are due on everybody's end. So right now, we're just sort of like, not necessarily in a waiting game, but things are moving steadily forward.
Everything's on target?
Everything's on target. You know, I'm very cognizant of students who have signed up and, you know, in terms of their payments and making sure that. You know, I've been doing this long enough to sort of, you know, understand, like I need to go talk to this particular student or call this particular parent and, and, you know, find out on there and how things are going. But to date, everybody's on target, everybody's up to date, everybody's gung ho. And there are no issues so far. And like I said, I did call yet this week just to, you know, say, how's everything going? Anything on your end that I should be aware of? And they were like, no, we're, we're fine. And I trust them, I trust what they say.
Any questions on this year's trip?
So Trump hasn't been over there at all.
No.
Oh, good thing. Unless he's in a family member.
Well, we haven't stayed in the Trump Tower yet, so.
How many students do you have?
Forty-three students resigned.
Forty-three? Would that number pretty much hold? As soon as it really starts to ramp up with that, that number pretty much hold? Or will you be somewhere in the 38 range for the time you actually look off?
No, it'll, it'll pretty much hold.
Really?
Yeah. There's, there's, there's nobody on the waitlist. So everything is, is ready to go. Forty-three is, is the max. You know, so we're capped out of the max. And that's been that way for the last five years. So we've taken, you know, as many as we can fit on a bus, you know, with chaperones and whatnot. Bus driver, tour guide, so. Yes. It's, I mean, it's a fun, it's a fun, it's a lot of work, but it's fun because the kids, you know, they all know, they all want to know, you know, so.
I remember last year, your report, you said that they started hunting you down. Here that the pack would arrive, even if it's not in your class.
It's unbelievable. It's, it's, it's like, so when, when facilities drops off the boxes, it's blazing with EF. And at this particular point, it wasn't that way earlier. But now, kids know. All of a sudden, I get kids, I don't even in class. Is the trip going? I'm like, whoa, why it is? You know, I've got, there's a process here, you know. So, so it is like, almost like a self-sustaining.
I was going to hear that your manager's going back.
That happens every other weekend, payroll.
It's not, it's, it's the kids, but it's also parents now. You know, so the posters are, the posters are up outside my room for the, for the, for the 2020 trip. And, you know, and so when parents come, you know, for the, for the, for the open house or the, meet with their teachers, they're always like, oh, this is who I call. And I've got emails and phone calls from parents. And I'm like, oh my God, are I, like, do I have this student in my class? I'm like, oh my God. And then all of a sudden, I get the rest of the message and it's like, they, they just want to know about the trip. So there's, you know, there's always people contacting you. So.
So that was a good problem, actually?
Yeah. Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's taken a lot to get to the point, you know. It wasn't, certainly wasn't this way 10 years ago. Because it's been, it's been 10 years now. And it wasn't this way 10 years ago. And, and now, now I, I'm, I'm kind of happy with where it's at.
Is it good?
Yeah.
For next year's trip?
So next year's trip, 2021, Berlin, Prague, Krakatoa, Budapest. We did this trip once before. And this is early on and we didn't, when the trips weren't as popular as they are now. And there's, there's quite a bit of interest in that region. You know, I, I like this, since we, the, the, not, I guess, the endearing memory might be the wrong word, but the, the striking memory when I took students on this particular trip, because we will go to Auschwitz, is seeing them in Auschwitz and speaking to them during that time and after that time. And it left an indelible mark on them. And, you know, I want to go, I want to go back there and bring students back there and expose them to this while those places are still around, you know. And give them a slice of history that for most of us in the room, you know, we weren't, when we were their age, we weren't able to go to these places, you know. And talk, you know, spend some time talking to them. Because I'm always the history teacher on the bus and talking about history, this is what, and, you know. And I want to give them that slice of what our life was like and, you know, let them know that now they can go here and whereas I couldn't go there. So there are opportunities available to them. I think it'll be a really wonderful trip. I don't have much, I mean, I don't have much to say about. I don't have much, I mean, I don't have much to say, but it's pretty much the same thing.
No, I was, I was just looking, I realized that we don't have our vacation dates set down yet, so we wouldn't, we don't know when it would be.
Yeah, and, and, and they know that as well.
Right.
And, and, and so they, they know, once, once on your end the calendar is set, then I, I sort of let them know what the dates are and then they make those dates official. You know, and they always ask us three days before and after the sort of April vacation. So that, you know, that's what they buy plane tickets and boat.
Right.
Then I'm always guaranteed of getting, I ask for dates of a particular day, so I try to minimize out of school time. But, you know, again, they come back, well, you understand, three days.
It's international travel, it's kind of, it's not like.
Yeah, I'm at the whim of the airlines, the whim of, of, you know.
Motion.
And a little discussion.
Yeah, well, the only thing I want to, cause I don't know that we've done it conditionally, we're just not subject to follow-up, follow-up here, much like the other trip.
So we should approve?
Yeah, just to come back and do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, just to keep us, anything changes, any problems?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and just to refresh everybody, EF, you know, and I'm always kind, like I said, I'm in constant contact with EF and even, and one of the things that Casey said to me is like, make sure that you remind the school committee that, that, you know, everything is based on your vote and if, and if you basically say no, then, you know.
That, that's kinda why I'm not looking to make it conditional, I mean, we have done this type of news, but definitely subject to follow-up.
Yes, no, absolutely.
So it's not, it's unconditional, but it's just subject to follow-up.
Wait, but his next year's trip?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And if there's anything that comes, that's all, just trying to.
I think we've done, I think that's really how, how it's done.
That's why I think we have two.
And that's, and that's fine, just to keep, and I like that too, just to keep everybody on the same page, where everybody's moving in the same direction and everybody's on the same page and everybody's made aware of what's going on.
So, does that fit the text of your?
Yeah.
So motion made to approve this for subject to, subject to follow-up?
He has a question.
I know he does. Mr. Brockler?
On the very last page is the two-day extension to Vienna, are you guys gonna be participating in that?
No, no.
You won't be?
No, no. Well, it gets into 12 days.
Too many days out.
Too many days out. And well, so I have done extensions in the past and it's more, how many days, how many days are we gonna lose? And it's, it's a cost, you know, how much is it gonna cost? What's the, what's the value, what's the value add to it? And at this particular point in time, day 12 puts us.
Kids are ready to come home.
Yeah, well, the kids are ready to come, I'm ready to come home. Ten days, I was pushing it, but it's more like time out of school.
I just, I just wanted to verify. Yeah, no, I was gonna say, even with that, it's, it takes them a day, it takes the kids a day or two to kind of, to jump back and everything.
Most of them are troopers and they come in the next day.
They might be here, involved.
Oh, yeah, well, I like it because of the kids, it's great, you should see the kids, cause they all walk into school and they, and they have this sweatshirts and they, they've just spent 10 days together, so it is like all of a sudden a new group of people at Valley Tech that they never knew existed. And I always sit there in amazement, like you go to the same school. Impossible. But it's like you take Valley Tech here and it's over 1,200 people and then all of a sudden, you take 43 Valley Tech students and you bring them 3,000 miles away and they're all, they're best buddies. And, and all of a sudden, not that they're forced to hang out with people, but if they have that common bond and they do actually form friendships that go well beyond the trip, which is, I think is part of what, what the goal is to come out of.
Is fundraising and things like that, fundraising has generally been successful to meet the needs generally?
Fundraising, I offer fundraising every year. There have been years where nobody takes, there, there have been years where nobody takes me up on it. There have been years where I've had to actually give money back to people because we haven't met the threshold of participating in the fundraising. So it varies from group to group, every year is different.
But it's been meeting the need, whatever, whatever tactics you try, it seems to be meeting needs.
Yeah, yeah, I'm giving them the opportunity and I'm upfront with the parents as far as fundraising goes, I'm upfront with them. When we do do fundraising, nobody has ever raised the entire amount, I, I think is into the three, four, $500 range, you know. But, and then, and then basically what ends up happening is they have a choice to, to, to do what they want with the money. They can, more of them just say, send it into EF and it comes off of their balance, you know, so. And then the business office cuts a group check and I give them a list of who, who's earned what and then it comes off of their balance, makes the parents that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Derek?
Just one philosophical one, you said you were doing this for about 10 years, I guess you mentioned, but. My assumption is that 10 years ago, it was, it was less expensive to go to wherever you went to at that point in time than what it is today. Just no more inflation and the way things increase costs. My, my only concern is that starting to look at somebody's costs relative to how many kids can really afford 33, 34, 35, 100, 38, 100 dollars a month.
Sure.
As a, and I don't need research on it, I just wanna make it as a comment. I just hope that we can try to keep the cost where we go and I'm sure that has a difference in terms of where you go and so what the cost is. That we're able to keep it so that we can let more of our students go to your number of 43, for instance. Not just the maybe more well-off ones, but even the ones that aren't well-off that can raise their monies and be able to go. So the cost doesn't keep escalating every year to the point it gets too expensive for just the average kid.
So, so to your point, when we first started, we were doing year by year. And then midway through, four, five, six years into the process, I came to you guys and presented that I wanted to do two years out and that's why I'm doing the 2021. And basically, so that will lower the cost and, and afford people a longer time to pay. So you, rather than taking the entire cost and dividing it by, you know, let's say 12 months, you're now taking that entire cost and dividing.
Yeah, and you're pulling it over.
Yeah, which makes it more palpable, the parents are certainly cognizant of that, they're thankful to that because it does afford them the ability to send their, their child to Europe for, for, for experience at a reasonable cost, you know. And you'd be surprised at the number of students that, that pony up the money on their own. They work hard to do this, these kids are amazing in terms of when they want something, they're gonna get it and they're gonna work hard to get it. So the kids that are, are on co-op, are using their co-op money, kids that are not on co-op and have part-time jobs are taking every single penny and, and putting it towards their trip. And they're, they're really resourceful, you know. But I do, I, I try to keep costs always, always when I, when I make these decisions about, about these trips. There are students that always make a recommendation, they, they wanna go here, they wanna go there and I go, well, that's great, but that's a $4,000 trip. That's really.
Australia might be out of the question.
Well, some kids wanna go to China, they're like, can we, can we go to China? I'm like, that's, that's a long time and it's very expensive and you've never been to Europe, so let's go there first. China on your own time.
That was a very common.
No, no, no. But just so you're aware that, that, that's always one of the major considerations I, I undertake when I.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sure EF probably appreciate the longer planning because now they consider the people a little bit more and a little bit better when dealing with the airlines, for example.
When I, when I started the two years out, I was one of the very first teachers at EF that actually proposed it. And since then, EF is now asking a lot, a lot more teachers doing it, they're offering it more as a suggestion. And they always say, you were one of the first that brought, brought it to our attention, that would be more, more cost efficient, get more kids involved, cause that's my thing, I wanna get more kids involved, I wanna give them the opportunity. Cause I think it does, it does make a difference. Definitely, after all of these years and seeing all these kids participating in these programs and all the things they do once they do it, this does make a difference, I'm convinced.
Have you had them go all four of the years they were here yet?
Close, three, three. If that kid goes three, it's.
Just curious, I'm like, it's up to get excited and you got the variety of the trips, but.
Yeah, like, and the only reason two kids did three is because their younger siblings came and the parents were like, all right, we can afford one, not two, you've been before, so.
Any, any other questions, Tom, discussion?
There's a series of relatively easy reads that have been promoted recently relative to Auschwitz. The tattooist of Auschwitz, if you've seen that one, prisoner of a certain number, it's a young boy moved from camp to camp and there's another one involved, even similar path with the girl. Very interesting reads and I don't know if it'd be supplementary reading for anyone, I'd be glad to offer them.
Yeah. Yeah, if you, if you forward those to me, I can, I'm always looking myself in.
You have to make a judgment, be thinking suitable for the high school student, but.
Sure.
Not to emotion, but, but, you know, training. But interesting, interesting reads.
Yeah, I look forward to, look forward to reading.
Any other questions, Tom? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2021 trip, subject to follow-up, Mr. O'Neil, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Enjoy your reading, everybody.
Two things for you, I'm gonna pass around a, a stack. Look for your town and select your town, and this is the list of the students that were admitted. So just look for your town. I have multiple things tonight, so we'll start with admissions, I believe is up first. Yes. So you should have your town, you'll get your town listing and then you'll get an admission report status for 1920. So I was chaperoning, chaperoning the culinary arts field trip, they were in Maine, in Port Maine. There was, they were all sleeping. I think they were all sleeping and full and eating a lot, we just come from a goat farm. All right, so the admissions status, they usually give you an opening picture of where we're at in admissions and it's kind of a reflection of the end of last year and where we stand as we state today. We are, have accepted 313 freshmen, and that's actually one over last year. And then I have the rest of the breakdown for you. We had 813 total applications, 771 were freshmen, another 42 were upperclassmen. And you can see how that breaks down. In that mix, we had 60 declines, 53 were declined on the first round. Seven were declines once they were accepted and were enrolled and then over the course of like the last weeks, right before school declined. Those seats were then subsequently filled. I need your handout, gives you your own and the numbers. I gave you a trend there, I've been always trying to do trends with my admissions, so you can see tab, you know, per town, how you've, you've been over the last couple of years and how that fares. And really where we are right now, we kicked off this season for our admission breakfast, we do that annually in September. We had a very good attendance this year, I was very happy with the towns that came. We, we had principals in the audience, we had special ed and guidance in the audience, I thought that it was well-attended. They were positive, upbeat, we had good dialogue, so it was great. We are in the process right now, we've already started tours and presentations, so we are deep into tours and finishing up those mid-November. You'll see on here that our open house, it's actually Wednesday, November 20th, marks by about a two-week earlier open house than we normally have done. We've always done like the first week in December, December's short this year and pulling it into November is more in line with what we see in admissions for St. John's or we see at other vocational high schools. So we think that this is a nice move and it just worked out well that we could make that with the calendar. Lastly, what I've given you is, last year when I was here early in August, I gave you handouts of the shops, but this was the final, we talked about how the viewbook was coming together. This is actually the viewbook in its stance right now. Remember I gave you the pages, right, you remember seeing those? But this is it together and you can see some added features to this, which are at, more at the end. That we talk about, we talk about a lot with social, emotional learning, what we offer in counseling, our academics are in there, as well as co-op information and application information. So this marks, this book is about eight pages bigger than our previous printing. So it is a bigger book, it, it does contain more. It contains more information, every shop got a double page, which was nice. And it has a lot of career information, which is really helping our parents make decisions around which shops to go in. So, so I wanted you to have the final copy. We print these every two years, so we're due to do a new photo shoot in April. We'll work on that again, we'll be printing and rewriting for the fall of next year. And you can see down there, I actually wrote, we're doing a nice rotation of who's up, and you can see at the bottom, who's up for rotation next. Especially with a lot of our design changes in some of the shops. That's admissions right now in a nutshell. Questions?
Quite good, the upperclassmen application 42, has that number increased all the time? I never thought it was a lower number than that.
Last year was actually a couple higher than this, I feel like this was a lower number. Just right around there, usually floats somewhere between 37, 45, right in there. And I have to say that of the nine students that we accepted, was it, seven of them were repeat applicants from the previous year who hadn't gotten in on their first time. And I love that, I love to see that, we track them, we mark those applications and we watch and it was really nice to see them go back at it and be successful.
Were there any more else in terms of the breakfast that you held on September 17th?
So with that, we always have some conflicts. There was, you know, I'll give you for instance, like last year Milbury wasn't able to make it, this year they were, you know. So I don't think in that case, they don't, I don't feel like anybody pulled it out on breakfast, sometimes it's just a conflict. Sometimes they'll send someone else. I think the only one that had a conflict this year might have been Northbridge. But, but not in a, when they're working with us for all the other things, so it's not.
Other attendants were across the board there.
Yeah, I thought that this attendance was higher than previous years. I was very happy with the attendance. So I thought that was nice. And actually, we had some great dialogue. One of the things that they talked about was how eighth graders, you know, they get nervous around the interview. And so we worked with our guidance department, our school counselors, and they've designed a really neat how-to and we've put that on the website, so for, for the eighth graders that are applying, it's sort of this how-to go to an interview, great tips and some questions and all of that. And that was at the request of the eighth grade guidance counselor, so, so it's really been neat to see that. We've also watched some schools does this, they actually link right our admissions website right to their website. So we encourage that and we're watching some of that partnership happen. I feel like it's been a good year, so it's been a good, good partnership.
Yeah, this is a massive undertaking and Michelle literally shepherds us through this with minimal issues. You can well imagine with 830 applicants, that you're not gonna keep everybody happy. So we do, we complete the admissions plan, we make adjustments, we sit down, the leadership team and chairman, what kind of modifications are appropriate, these are filed for authorization with the State Department of Education Education because we function under a state of food admission. This entire activity happens in the sea of declining enrollment all around us. And at this time, while we have no known issues, there are, the state has indicated to the state organization known as the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators, that a commissioner has targeted five vocational technical schools for questioning admission practice. We're led to believe that those schools are Diamond, which is great at Fall River, Great Bend, Bedford, Bay Path Regional, Cheltenham, Montiche, regional, Votac in Pittsburgh and possibly Worcester Trade or Tech, Worcester Tech in the city of Worcester. And so the question is being raised whether or not the apparent admission plans of those settings and possibly others, do they, are they sensitive to the demographics that are served by those vocational technical schools? Is there any intentional or unintentional discriminatory action relative to admissions? We have not encountered these issues, we, we are under the impression that we do mirror the demographics. We have not encountered these issues, um, we, we are under the impression that, uh, we do mirror the demographics of our area, which is somewhat different than those that I've identified. We will be glad to work with our colleagues in those systems and the organizations to help rectify the challenges that we face and otherwise. But I wanna make a point, certainly on behalf of Anthony and myself, of conveying our appreciation to Michelle. And in an added situation, as you transition from the previous role that's identified here, uh, into the new vocational coordinator role, which is still a transition, it's underway, uh, but it's been a seamless one, and, uh, it's, it comes with appreciation.
Any other questions on the admission status?
Alright, so next round. So next, moving to my sports hat, I was sending an email today to the golf coach, he's also an electrical teacher. And at the beginning of the email, I said I'm wearing the vocational hat on this email, and then later on, I sent another one, saying, okay, now your turn. This is really exciting, I do have to say that, um, it's a pleasure to reflect back on the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year in athletics. It was, um, by all accounts, a, um, record-breaking, remarkable, award-winning, rewarding season, um, across the board. I thought, and I said to Mr. Steele, um, especially as we started to talk about maybe moving positions, he said, I don't know that it could ever get better than this. And so this sort of reflects that, and what you have in front of you is a participation history, um, from two thousand and six all the way through today. You can see the growth, you know, although the last couple of years were about the same, that's because of the amount of sports we have has stayed the same. So obviously, our numbers are gonna be, um, are consistent, um, and you can see that. But the growth to be at forty-eight, you know, teams that we do at this program at this level, um, and servicing over eight hundred kids, you know, is really remarkable. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, you can see some of the, um, the accomplishments down below, we had several league champions, uh, we had several state vote qualifiers. You can see our overall varsity record of over seventy percent. We had three state vocational champions in girls soccer, boys cross-country, and boys lacrosse. Girls soccer was a repeat of two, girls, I mean, boys cross-country was a three-peat, and then boys lacrosse was the first time in school history. Down below, you can see the MIA teams, it was the first time in my reign, and I think any previous, that every single one of our teams qualified for district play. So all of our varsity programs, all twenty, all the cross-country and track are not listed right now on there, they're automatically qualified. Every single one qualified. It's pretty amazing to know that your school, um, sits in that. In the playoffs, I, I wrote down where they ended their season, we had state semis, we were in quarterfinals, we were in semifinals, just really exciting. Down below, you can see, we had, obviously, our championships, we brought home girls soccer, Central Mass championship for the first time. Football state championship, obviously, for the first time, and this year we were awarded the Markham Award. And I put down the years, the eighth year, eighth time in twelve years, is that what we figured out? Receiving that, which is Boston Globe, um, it, it's given by the Boston Globe to the top winning percentage of varsity teams in the vocational, um, division. What's interesting is as I wrote this, and I wrote notes for myself, I, you know, again, I, I can't say enough about last year, and I, I really believe there's no way we can beat it until I wrote down the notes for right now. So fall two thousand nineteen and where we stand, we are league champions already, with two seasons, two weeks left in the regular season. We are league champions already in field hockey, girls soccer, boys soccer, and golf. And the state vocational championship, um, our golf team just won it last week, which represents the first time they've won that since two thousand and four. So as much as I sit here and say last year was amazing, we could be on the cusp of another amazing year. Lastly, what I did wanna bring to the table, and I know with the last meeting you did get, um, you had some conversation about wrestling and girls ice hockey. Next year, when you look at this history, would include the addition of the co-op for girls ice hockey and the co-op for wrestling. In addition, yesterday, we authorized, um, a team in esports, which is video. And so that kind of falls on the MSS AA side, on the academic side, but they will compete as a varsity team. They compete on Tuesdays, and there's five of them that will compete at the varsity level with two alternates. And they compete against other high school teams in Massachusetts in esports. And I'm pretty excited to see that happen. So, um, that's more, it's a club, it's come out, it comes out of our game in clubs, so it's a form of a club, although we call it a team. So I'm really excited about that because it adds an element, um, of competitiveness for a group of students that might not otherwise be of alternative to what we call a sport. So it's really exciting.
I have this question, is there, um, any other vocational schools that are in that same, uh, competition?
I believe Shashine is the only other one that is doing it right now, I think we're both in that, but I believe that's the only other one that I've seen signed up. Yeah, I would too. I would too. This is the second, what they call the second season, first season was last fall through May. So we're in the second season of it. So I think you'll see. I know Sheaford High School said it, uh, I'm trying to think who, because I think that they won, um, I know a lot of East, Eastern Mass schools are in it as well.
Just pretty bigger growth to a college.
Yeah, Mountain, their championship last year was at Cholet. So, yeah, so that's kind of interesting. So, there we go, sports.
You say eight hundred and sixteen students participate? That's out of twelve twenty-four?
Yep.
Is that level for two out of every three?
So, and remember, in the way you count this, certainly you have some kids that do multiple, although the multiple sport athlete has slowly died, which is really such a shame. When we were in high school, we played three sports. A lot of times, these, these girls or boys are specializing, so you see that more. But, so the numbers represent a little bit of a crossover, you know, you'll have a track runner and a cross-country runner, so they do crossover a little bit. So if I was to measure this down, maybe authentically, the number of athletes, I, I still think you're in this, I still think you're in about the five to six hundred. And that doesn't include the fitness center, who today asked me if they could get shirts, because you know, they're a club too. So, uh, all those kids that participate in other ways.
Michelle, we have a slight amendment with the co-op for hockey, do you want to mention that?
Yes, yes. So our, our, our hope had been that we were going to be in the other co-op, uh, that kind of fell through. Just, the girls co-op in the MIA world is really tough, so they already had a, a good amount of schools in that conglomerate, so to add one more, uh, was not feasible. So what we did was reach out to the other side, which is Bellingham, and they, um, they, uh, co-op with, uh, Dover Sherborne and Hopkinton. And so we were able to get into them, they actually, they actually, um, skate both their games, and their practices at the Blackstone Arena, uh, right in Hopedale. So it's actually, I think, a better situation for our students. And so tonight, actually, is meet the coach night in Hopkinton, so we, I met with the girls, there's about four or five that are gonna participate. They're over there now, and, uh, they'll be participating, and it'll be in that site, so I'm actually, I think it's a better fit for us.
No, I was gonna say, I remember, I think there was a conversation whether or not we could do something, is this, when, when we had that last year, and it turns out that the opportunity came to us.
Yep, it did.
Any other questions for Michelle? Wearing neither hat?
Any of them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burke?
We had our facilities subcommittee meeting this week, establishing Mr. Rose, myself, our attendance. The Eagle Scout project was discussed, uh, due to an aging-out time constraint, uh, that, and the scope of the project, that project, uh, didn't happen. So we went off and, he did participate, uh, in another project, only was able to get his Eagle Scout, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Summer projects, uh, were supposed to be all done as of yesterday, but, uh, we have one more piece left to complete, uh, and that's the track repairs. And then everything will be one hundred percent. Two hundred, three hundred wing hot water, uh, issue has been solved, all the mixing valves and the risers were replaced, and that was done in-house. Roof grant for the three hundred wing, that is in full swing, uh, the target is late summer, early fall of two thousand twenty-four completion. The security grant and, uh, what's gonna be done is in full swing as well. If you want details, for security purposes, we're not gonna discuss that, but if you want details of that, please ask Jim, uh, he'd be happy to, uh, give you some information. We had the infrared, uh, roof inspect, inspection, uh, very inexpensive, it was twenty-nine hundred dollars cost to do so. There were a number of moisture spots located, and presently, facilities is, uh, working with the roof contractor to do the warranty repair. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the eleventh of November, at four-thirty. Any questions?
Oh, thank you. Um, as much as we take pride in taking care of the building and the grounds, every so often, we're reminded that we have a fifty-five-year-old facility. And that's what happened with the water issue, okay? And so, um, we do our, our best, and we're pleased to have the, uh, you know, social team and cooperation, we have some staff. But we're still fifty-five years old. So the committee should recognize that occasionally, we'll have some things that surfaces that we, that given the age of the building, that we will need to address. We're not an antique, but we are fifty-five years old. Fair to say?
Fair to say.
Not that fifty-five is old. We're a classic, we're a classic.
Vintage.
We're vintage, we're classic.
Any other questions for facilities? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next item up, Mr. Johnson.
Hello. First item up for bid.
I should be concerned, I expect to dress it all black.
Johnny Cash.
No good news comes with this.
So you just heard them make mention of the, uh, security grant, and that's our first, uh, item that we're seeking to vote on, we went out to, uh, bid. Uh, and, uh, I think we probably had four interested individuals, we wound up getting two formal submissions. And, uh, and your pricing is there in front of you, uh, the apparent low bidder, that's the most responsive and responsible, was Green Acres Landscape and Construction, and then Highland Fence and Construction came in at fifty-three thousand five hundred. That's the recommendation before you is to make that motion to approve Green Acres, so.
Green Acres was forty-nine.
No, Highland, Highland was fifty-three thousand.
Someone will correct.
So, but the motion is to award to Green Acres.
And someone with a microphone, Mr. Henry, have a second?
I'll second him.
And a second. Questions, comments, discussion?
Doc? I emphasize that once again, this was secured, I believe, we gave a thousand dollar grant, uh, this competitive grant with the state. Another example of how we've been able to make an improvement, uh, protect the security of the entire environment, but not mass our talents to fund it, so.
We do have matchable grant.
With the exception of, of, of matching requirements to secure the eighty thousand.
It is, and, uh, we haven't played out the cost on the wind film at this point, uh, so we won't know exactly how the district will be impacted, but it will be within what we expected, in terms of, because we can always go back, uh, on, uh, the wind film if we need.
For clarification to the audience, the matching will be accomplished within the existing approved budget of the district, not an additional surcharge to the town.
Correct, it's already reserved in the capital projects.
Any other questions, comments, discussion, uh, item nine point one? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the bid to Green Acres, say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries. Next up, mine items.
Uh, no line item transfers tonight, so we can pass on to items nine point three A and B. They are two donations that we received, the first one, uh, is a vehicle from, uh, Mr. Patrick, uh, to our Autotech program, uh, Ford Explorer, two thousand and two, valued at two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars.
Doc? I wish to declare, this is my sister-in-law, although I did not, I was not aware of, I do try to keep track of most of the things that happened here, but I was not aware of this donation. But I must point out, that given the chance to look at nine point three B, that the estimated value, which is just slightly higher than the stack washer and dryer, is implication in itself, that this is probably not overvalued in the way in which it was calculated. But I wish to declare that this is a relative, I was not aware of the donation, I, you know.
And Doc, they, they, this goes through the instructors and they use Kelly Blue Book, and then they look at the condition of it, and it's within that range, we always get copies of that, so.
I am, I am aware of that, I was having a little fun.
So, motion made? Motion made to accept the donation?
Yes.
Have a second. Questions, comments, discussion on whether or not we should accept the two thousand and two Ford Explorer valued at twenty-one sixty-two? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries, the donation is accepted.
And the next item is, uh, as Dr. Patrick mentioned, a stack of washer and dryer, they are brand new, they were donated to the HVAC department, uh, for use within the building. Uh, we are looking at the potential to actually use that in addition to them providing service to it. Over in, uh, Health Services, we did put in for a stack of a washer and dryer through Perkins, it was approximately the same value. But that'll be, you know, through the vocational coordinators to determine if that's a, uh, a move that we wanna make. But there is an opportunity where we can repurpose those grant funds.
Motion to accept, like the Seattle.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of accepting the stack of washer and dryer, say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Barlow, I've never heard this. Oh, no, no, I just wanna make sure we got the second happening. Next up.
The next item is, uh, just the current grant listing that we have, uh, put this together just before the meeting, it's coming in at about one point, just under, uh, one point. They would say two million, how about that? I do wanna point out, we did receive word that, uh, I guess a couple of grants went through some of the coordinators. Uh, Ashley McClure was successful in receiving an, an additional grant through the Blackstone Valley Chamber for five hundred dollars. And then we did get confirmation that the, uh, Lampin grant did go to the HVAC department, so that has been confirmed, it's no longer waiting. Fortunately, that means one of our other programs did not receive the grant for two thousand. So in that sense, it will be, uh, uh, you know, just a two thousand dollar, uh, estimate coming off of the grant listing and adding another five hundred. We pushed, one of the items I wanna point out is the DOT Workforce Transportation Grant, we're seeking two vans for that. That was originally, uh, we were attempting to put that into the Mass Skills Capital, but we thought it was more strategic to focus on one grant, which is also listed here. And is for the biotech laboratories to really focus those efforts, because they were going to be siloing schools in terms of what you have received in the past. When we were talking to, uh, Mr. Poplansky, he, and he understood what these costs were, and didn't really feel like it was a fit for that grant, and that's where a majority of the costs were. He suggested that we put in for this additional, uh, grant through DOT. It didn't really fit in the traditional manner, and we pointed that out, uh, but we received positive feedback so far that they were enthusiastic to read the grant. And then I've also received some, uh, questions on our, uh, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant as well, uh, last night that I responded to, so hopefully that's the news, we'll wait and see. The only other, oh.
This is a great snapshot, uh, of the date, I believe, um, what other pending activities would include the MSBA's, a solid, solid reimbursement under the external, not necessarily grant.
That's what I was just, actually about to talk about. So, um, yep, uh, so I've been speaking, we've already had a, a kickoff meeting with our architect and, uh, OPM. Uh, and that's, uh, Hill International and Mount Vernon Group. I reached out to them today to find out when we could have proposals on our table, and they thought maybe as early as next week. I ran some numbers today, just to look at where we set with the previous, uh, group project that we had, that was, uh, thirty-seven thousand square feet. The OPM came in at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, ninety thousand for the architect, and seven hundred and twenty-two thousand for the construction. When I looked at valuing that as an estimate, I put a hundred and thirty to the OPM. Uh, when I looked at valuing that as an estimate, I put 130 to the OPM, 93 to the architect. And using the 22,000 square feet, um, I came up with about 495,000 for the construction. Important to know, in our previous project, we were at 19 and a half, uh, $19.50 per square foot. Uh, for that particular project, I estimated the new at 22 and a half. So, hopefully it still comes in at that lower, we've always been successful with that range. But I thought it was really conservative to push that up another $3 a square foot. Um, and we were coming in at total cost of about 718,000. Currently, we have 716,000 in the capital projects. I want you to know, I did not back into that number, I really, you know, just giving an inflationary factor to OPM and Architect, understanding that was a higher cost, fewer square feet. Those probably aren't gonna change much because of the nature of the work, but certainly the construction cost would. Uh, so I think we're looking good. Uh, if it does come in a little bit more, uh, we will likely be doing an additional transfer once we get our excess inefficiency certified this year to cover for, for any amounts that might be estimated above that, okay?
With the 53, 53 percent, 53.53, so it's an estimated $360,000 rough numbers now. Okay, and the accelerated reimbursement programs under MSBA. Of the, of the 360,000, how close does that come to what we envision the matching contribution to the capital skills grant to happen, to happen?
Oh, you could, at that point, you could actually like use every penny, right?
I'm sorry, let me move with the question. If that would, if 360 doesn't meet half of the $1, three to one match.
Right.
If, at full max of the capital skills.
Right. We were saying two.
You need to know 100, right?
Yeah, at our, at where we were on our cost, uh, we were looking at probably between 250 and 300,000 dollars.
From, from this source, from MSBA?
Actually, it's not from MSBA, it's from our capital projects for renovation. No, this will still be on its own, we've got that in addition too. This will be used for, we're gonna be starting, I think, this final, we wanna call it the final, because this has never had a true roofing system put on it, so we're gonna parlay that into that.
So the school community should not be under the impression that we're using the accelerated reimbursement on MSBA for the 718,000 estimated roof price as a funding source of the match for the capital skills?
Correct.
Okay, we're not dependent, we're not using it for that.
Okay, if you ever felt like you needed to have that layer of funds infused, you could always interfund borrow, but we would show that due back to that fund so that we maintain the integrity of that reimbursement for our student project.
Understood. The thinking is, in the sculpture made planning, if you enter into the budget season, that if it was encumbered in concept, then it wasn't available for anything else. But it's not.
It's not encumbered.
At this point, but it, okay.
If, I'll just say this, it's encumbered by virtue of the capital.
Yeah, by source, right, okay, and it's category, okay.
But I, I would think good news, uh, Jim, you had some correspondence back and forth. We are looking at the February, uh, meeting February 13th, and they suggested that we could get started in June. Um, substantial completion by the end of July, final completion by the end of August on that time. So, perfect, okay? Any additional questions on that? And I will actually add that once, I just barely quantified these calls, so I can go ahead and do the grant aspect here. Total it up and with the 53.53% reimbursement on, uh, for the estimated grant amount. Uh, the final sheet that we have here is a timeline for the budget, uh, subcommittee meeting. I believe this is our first pass at this, I know you've had several opportunities, Doc, to look at it, we've made some changes. Uh, but we just ask you to take a look at it, let us know if there are any significant conflicts that might prevent us, for some reason, from holding one of these meetings. We have been back and forth with several different dates and we, we even wound back up, I believe, at, at that January 2nd, which we wanted to try to avoid, but just.
Exactly, yeah, we, we, when you see that January 2nd date, we were attempting to see whether or not we could work around that. Uh, but it's a tight timescale, you know, governance numbers usually come out in January, so it looked like, it was proven to be that is, is after we had the discussion.
Yep.
You're right.
Thank you very much. Curious.
Alright, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Steele.
There we go.
So joining in person tonight is Eddie Evans, our academic coordinator. And, um, bringing him up for our first item tonight, which is our MCAS report. And, understanding that this is the, the first set of results from the new Next Gen, Next Gen MCAS, things, a lot of things have changed. And so when I asked Eddie if he would come and present to us tonight, um, he said, sure, you know, being the thorough guy that he is, he said, hey, we should split this up over October and November. I could use an hour tonight to go over the new definitions, psychometric parameters, calculations and other things. And I think maybe in November, I could actually give the results, so to be able to stand them. So that's fantastic, Eddie, these people love along with, uh, they tell me all the time.
It might not make it out of your eyes.
Yes, and he realized that the principal has a reputation for a brief focus presentation.
That's right. I said, Eddie, name that tune in 25 minutes or less, all of it, and all of it. So with that introduction, um, I know that Mr. Evans worked pretty hard to make this as succinct as possible and has a presentation for you on our latest MCAS performance, outstanding, it's a completely new album. With that, Eddie, take it away.
Yes, so before, um, before we get into some of the charts and the data, I felt compelled to provide a little summary sheet at the beginning to just explain some of the changes. If you recall, I was here in March to talk to you about how the administration of the ELA English Language Arts and Math Exam was gonna be completely different. Uh, not only was it being administered on the computer, but the standards that were being assessed, the types of questions that were being asked, it was all different. With the Next Generation tests, it was not only that they were on the computer, but they were also designed to be harder. The state intended to make them harder exams and they, uh, wanted to have the score distributions to have the top achievement level, have fewer students in it. They did that by not only making the exam more difficult, but by actually shrinking the score range that one would qualify for the top achievement level. And I'll explain some of that as we go. There are new achievement levels, so for the ELA and Math Exam, uh, they are no longer reported as advanced, proficient, needs improvement and failing. It's now exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting the expectations and not meeting the expectations. Again, these are not a life-for-life swap, exceeds is not the new advanced and not meeting is not the new failing, it's a, it's a different animal. Um, however, I was able to, uh, utilize my statistician skills and do some equipercentiling to put some of the, um, to put some of the scores into context for you. One other thing before we get into the data, I wanted to inform you all of the state's response to the controversial essay question that was on the March exam. You may have heard it, it was a local news story, it was a national news story. There was an essay question on the ELA, on the ELA exam that was, uh, can, after further review, considered to be a little insensitive on the grounds of race. And the state made a lot of, um, did a lot of different things that didn't affect Valley Tech students. But one fallout from that, that did directly affect 268 of the 304 testers was that any student who met the first qualifier for the ADAM Scholarship, which is the equivalent of one advanced and two proficient on their three MCAs, was given the chance by the state to retake the ELA MCAS in November. So all of these students that were offered it achieved the equivalent of proficient, even though that's not how they report it anymore. They all achieved the equivalent of proficient on the exam. But the second qualifier for the ADAM Scholarship is being in the top 25% of your class. So any student that met the first qualifier was given the opportunity to retake in the event that the controversial question negatively affected their performance on the ELA exam. 23 of our students took us up on that offer and when we begin the November retakes on November 6th, 23 of the 268 students did opt in to retake the MCAS. If their ELA score in November is higher than their score in March, that will become the score that's used to calculate who gets the ADAM Scholarship from the state. I don't know at this point, there hasn't been any literature or documentation from the state on if a student's score improves in November, if that will affect BBT's macro level data. I don't know if they're gonna use those adjusted scores on the school reports or if it will solely be for the purposes of the ADAM Scholarship.
I guess it's probably not, it'll be a first, first attempt score is probably our, our tattoo for 2020.
It's been a topic of discussion on academic curriculum coordinator, emails from other schools, there hasn't been a definitive word one way or the other, but that's common thought that it will, our data will stay the same. So if you turn the page, the first chart I provided is the macro level data on all three exams. You'll see in the charts, they all follow the same format, there's the N included column, which is the number of students in the class of 2021, which is our juniors that were in that, um, achievement level. You'll see the percentage of school and district is the same, cause we are a school and a district. And then the far right column is the percentage of students, um, from the state that met those achievement levels. One thing I wanna draw your attention to is the bottom chart, which is the science exam. The science exam is still considered the legacy test, which is pen and paper. So last year, the sophomores took their ELA and math exams on the computer, but their science exams on paper. And their scores are still reported on the legacy scale. This year's current sophomores will also take the legacy science exam, but the current freshmen will take the Next Generation Computer exam. So in June 2020, we'll be doing both paper and computer. But then next year, this year's current freshmen, when they're sophomores, uh, will be taking all computer-based testing. Are there any questions on the first macro level chart? All the next charts, the next four pages, I believe, are all devoted to the English Language Arts exam administered in March. You'll see bar graphs, the top one and with green and orange is this year's results, followed by three bar graphs that show you the previous three years' results. And then a chart that has all the same information, but also includes student growth percentile. What the green and orange chart illustrates is the state's desired achievement distributions. Um, as I said before, it was a smaller qualifying score for the exceeds, it was a much smaller range. Um, and you can see that we had an overwhelming majority meet the expectations. In a further chart, I equipercentiled the results to show what they would have been on the old scale, which will provide a little bit more context on that. One thing also I wanna draw your attention to is that for the students that were in the partially meeting expectations, 100% of those students, if we equipercentiled the results, would have been scored as proficient on previous MCAs just to illustrate that it's meant to be, it's meant to be a harder test and it's harder to get into the meeting expectations category than it previously would have been to get into the proficient category. Similarly, you say 2% of the students classified as not meeting the expectations. The majority of those students were determined by the state to have met their competency determination. So in years past, if a student was in the failing, they didn't meet their competency determination, but now a student can be in the not meeting expectations category, but not have been determined to have failed. One thing of note that I always like to highlight to the committee, uh, by always, this is my second time doing this, but last year I did this and I wanted to do it again. There were 16 students who in eighth grade were in the not meeting expectations, who were in meeting expectations or partially in 10th grade. So we're very proud of that. And then of those 16 students, seven of them had failed the seventh grade ELA MCAS and then didn't meet the expectation in eighth grade, but passed, um, or met the expectation here. And that's something we're very proud of, is the growth. Are there any questions about, um, this page of data? If you take a look at the next chart, this is what I was talking about. This is not an official report from the state. The state has used equipercentiling for the official purposes of accountability targets for districts, student growth percentile projections for districts and for ADAM Scholarship calculations, as I had mentioned before. They are not using equipercentiling for official school reporting. But what I did was I took the ranges of scores that they provided me and the formula they used. And in an effort to just place this year's ELA results into a familiar context for you all, I wanted you to see what they came up with, um, equipercentiled. So if, if we were presenting them under the advanced through failing scale of yesteryear, we would be celebrating, um, a very high percentage of students doing very well on the exam, which is something that, uh, you know, we've seen year in and year out, despite the format and despite the scoring formula, BBT students always seem to demonstrate high achievement and high growth. Are there any questions about the, uh, third chart? If you can turn the page, this is an official one from the state. Uh, this is a new one, I did not include this one in last year's chart. Uh, but what this shows is it couples our growth, our student growth with our achievement. If you're in the upper right quadrant, you're demonstrating high achievement and high growth from eighth grade to 10th grade. Uh, we're very pleased to be in the upper right quadrant. Obviously, the goal, obviously the goal is to be at the very top of the upper right corner and we'll continue to work to get there. But we're very happy to be in that upper right quadrant, because that means our students are not only achieving well while they're here, but they're also growing, which is something I know that our staff, uh, really, um, have a lot of pride in and hangs their hat on. Are there any questions about that chart? So now we, uh, the next two charts, page, charts, charts five and six are comparative charts that show, uh, Valley Tech on the ELA exam uh, compared with our local sending districts and also our sister schools, uh, other career technical schools across the state. One thing that is not on the, on this spreadsheet was the average scaled score of our students on the ELA came out to a 515.1, which would be solidly in the meets the expectations category on the new exam. And under the old formula, if we equipercentiled it, it would be solidly on the advanced category of the old scale. And when looking at the vocational one, we're very proud to be in the top three amongst our sister schools for student growth percentile. Um, our students, um, wherever they come in academically, they seem to demonstrate a high degree of growth and we're very proud to, um, to be there. Are there any questions about either the chart for ELA for the local schools or our, um, the career technical schools? Great, we're gonna shift gears to the math exam. Um, again, similar format to the ELA and highlights the bar, the breakdown in the desired achievement levels. Again, um, I was very happy to see an increase, um, in our median student growth percentile and our mean. Um, that just means that our students, no matter where they come in, demonstrate, demonstrate more growth than in most places, which we're very proud of. Of note with our math, we had six students, um, in eighth grade who scored a not meeting the expectation, uh, but, but met the expectation in 10th grade. I dug back a little further and we had 24 students who in seventh grade failed the math MCAS, but in 10th grade either partially met or met the expectations, which would put them in the proficient or advanced category on the old scale. Are there any questions on that chart? Are there any questions on that chart? Great, if you shift here, turn the page. I equipresentiled the math results to the old score, the old standard, just to put them into a familiar context for you. And again, we were pleased to see subtle growth in the advanced category. And we will continue to try to grow those results in further years. Some of the things we've already been doing with the math department this year is as computer-based testing is blowing up across the country, there's a lot more products and opportunities out there to make computer-based testing a much more week-to-week thing. And that's something that we are looking to transition to within the math department, is introduce more computer-based testing to day-to-day affairs. If we can turn the page, the chart, the growth chart for math. Again, we're pleased to be in the upper right quadrant. Our students are demonstrating, you know, some good achievement, high growth. And we're gonna keep pushing to try to move that dot more to the top right corner. We're pleased to be in the upper right quadrant, but we'd like to be in the upper right corner. Any questions on that chart? The next two charts are the comparative charts with math, with both our sending communities and our sister schools. One of the things that we were extremely proud to see was to have the highest percentage of students in the combined meeting expectation and exceeding the expectation category. I know that our math tutors worked very hard when the new when the new test was released and the new standards. They worked very hard to, you know, put together a solid program for our students, and they did so. And then the growth percentile as well. We were really happy to see that we had the second highest growth percentile in the valley. And we'll continue to work at that. And then with the vocational chart, we're very proud to have the fourth highest growth numbers. Our students come in strong, but they come out stronger, and we'll continue to work at that. And then with the chart, it shows that on the vocational chart, particularly on the math exam, our students perform really, really well compared to the other institutions. And that's something that I know that the department's really proud of. The last chart I have for you is the science. And the science does not follow the pattern established by ELA and math in terms of the charts I provided you for a couple of reasons. Student growth percentile is not reported on the science exam, because there is no middle school science exam. So this is the only science MCAS they take. So there's no growth percentile. Since there are new achievement levels, there weren't the comparative graphs or the equipresentiling opportunities available. But I'll be sure to do that on future exams. But there was some really valuable data to be reported, and some really high achievement to be celebrated as it relates to science at BBT. One of the things I did, you can see on the chart, I combined our sending schools and the vocational schools, just to illustrate how well our students did in the combined proficient and advanced category with science. But I took the chart, one of the charts on the state's website that has all the districts statewide, and I started sorting them and looking at the data. And if you take the 91% of our cohort being advanced or proficient, it puts us in the top 50 districts in the state. And then of those top 50 districts, we were the 13th largest cohort of testers. And I thought that that was a really, it just stuck out to me as a really valuable data point and something that I wanted to share with you. I shared that with our science department, and they were thrilled. They do a wonderful job. They take it very seriously. And about half of our students take the science MCAS at the end of freshman year, and they do great. The other half take it at the end of sophomore year, and it seems that they're doing great also. So in typical BBT fashion, we meet the students where they are, design a program that's appropriate for them, whether it's best to take the science MCAS in one year or two, and it seems to be working well. Are there any questions about this or any of the other charts or data points I've shared with you tonight?
Anthony, question one. The 308 test takers. Valley Tech never had MCAS test results for eighth graders. Nor would have considered it in the admissions process. But the 308 test takers represented here, would they have been admitted under the modified admission plan where we intentionally reduce the emphasis of academic grades coming in?
This would be our current junior class. So yes, it would have been the first class, I believe.
Yes.
Under that modified, the emphasis of academics. Correct?
Just a reference point, okay? We intentionally attempted to get diversified and to be more open-minded relative to the components of our admission process. And it has a conversation with colleagues, school committees of the table. And ultimately, we filed an amendment to reduce the weight of academic grades coming in. I think from 40 to 30.
Okay.
And so this 308 test takers not only had a new instrument, but they were admitted under a new weighted process, which lessened previous academic work. I think it speaks to the greater success of the academic team and the integrated approach by vocational people to have the students grow, is what I know here. I think described very efficiently to have these results.
Question?
Let me understand that correctly. So we do not receive the MCAS, the test results from the sending school, correct? So you can't measure the growth from where they came in for the sophomore year?
We do not have that at the time of admissions. Once a student is accepted, we eventually can, you know, chase that down, okay? Because now we own the student, and we have access to information that only the student might have known of the sending school. Then you could do, keep in mind, if you do any kind of analysis, you're also dealing with different instrumentation because of the change of the instrument.
Correct.
The process. We don't have it at admissions. Eventually, you can retrieve it.
Okay.
Is that fair answer, Eddie?
Yes, yes. So I gained access to their middle school MCAS scores when I was sent their 10th grade score. So I receive a spreadsheet from the state, and it's an amazing amount of cells. And in that...
But if you see where they come in, in the 8th grade.
That's correct.
And we're there, and need improvement, and they go to pass. We know that we've improved over the sending school.
Yes.
And we're making progress.
Yeah, we're able to calculate that growth. But when we do the admissions process, we don't, we don't know, we don't know what their scores are.
No, I understand that. Just saying, when you get sophomore results of the state's tests, you can compare, say, the...
And those are the data points that make me most happy. Like, we all get into this business to help kids get better, no matter where they start. And to be able to say that we had, I think I had 24 students who failed the math MCAS at middle school come out, it's great. And that's the...
No, my problem is with the sending schools saying, we will take the cream of the crop. And when you can show that this is where they come in, and this is where they improve to, that we're not, we're just taking the cream of the crop. We're taking the students they gave us, and we're making the cream out of it.
Thank you.
Well, that's my thought, too. Is there any way to package that as a marketing piece back to the towns of that success?
So they don't hear that.
Yep. It's a delicate matter, okay? And that we do our best to show cooperation and assistance to the sending schools. And we don't try to, you know, show them in a bad light, okay? We celebrate the successes. We concede the growth. All we ask is recognition that the work of the student, parent, staff is what allows the kid to grow. Nobody can steal that growth. The kid has earned it, and we strive to be part of the process. Data like this, that the state does require, you know, without bias, confirms the increased growth. But it's a delicate matter relative to the marketing.
Yeah.
No, I... Dealing with the other school, Mike, you don't want to embarrass him.
Sure. I have just another question on a state level. Does the state have concerns with other technical high schools on their results? What's some of their...
The process for evaluating schools is the same for us. You have accountability measures. They're looking at all kinds of factors, from the accreditation, from different visiting teams, from the state's investigative activities. Yes. So the summary answer is yes, they are concerned. They raise issue. They're looking for improvements. They oftentimes send people here, say, as a model. You know, we do our best, and it's not convenient necessarily to have a number of visitors and colleagues come in. But we take pride in that, and we don't have all the answers, but we're eager to share and continue to look for new ways to do things. Is that fair, Eddie?
Yes, it does, the state has a very detailed, very sophisticated accountability process for schools that circles around this data, and ultimately, they give a level rating. We still enjoy a Level 1 rating. We've been able to maintain that, hold on to that for many years. It's not easy to maintain. The smallest fluctuations and things can certainly bump you down a level. And certainly, a school that had low growth and low performance would plummet in the levels. And as you go down towards Level 3, Level 4, is when they actually start coming in and talking about things like receivership and restaffing your school and so forth. So there is a very formal process that watches all of this data and the school's performance, so their ability to have students grow.
I just want to compliment it. This is very sophisticated, well done. And I realize it was a challenge because of the, you know, incongruency, if you will, of the two instruments in the process. But it's, I think it's very enlightening. Thank you for sharing that.
Likewise, I'd just like to give an acknowledgement, not just to Eddie, but to the sector of the academic staff that he oversees and supervises. And I know you mentioned several times about different departments taking pride in their work and working hard. They all do. It also represents an integration effort with our vocational side, which has been one of our key strategies. So, you know, successes like this really belong to the whole house. But certainly, Mr. Evans has taken the lead role in that as their academic coordinator. He's the sharp guy, knows what he's doing, and very, very happy and comfortable with Eddie taking the lead on the academic side of the house and on all fronts. So thank you, and please convey our appreciation to the whole academic team. Certainly, what the book staff know as well.
Interesting segue that this school committee recently had a presentation on the science department. Of course, that's only one of the disciplines represented. But the committee was complimentary of the sophistication, the detail, the attention factors, and the all-encompassing approach to science. And you can see the proof-in-the-pudding kind of argument when you see those kind of scores. Just as an example of the way in which an academic discipline draws upon the research throughout the district.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.2, it's my pleasure to call Mr. Connors. Actually, Dr. Connors, I'd just congratulate him on recently earning his PhD.
And recognize what...
That's right. Dr. Connors, you certainly know as one of our vocational directors, but recently received Project Lead the Way results from 2019. As you know, that encompasses most of our engineering curriculum electives. And he's very timely, running right behind Mr. Evans, has a somewhat brief but significant report to give you on our annual Project Lead the Way summary. So with that, Dr. Connors, take your way.
Mr. Evans was afforded a 25-minute timeframe, and Anthony told me I had 90 seconds. So... I've shared with you in the past the Project Lead the Way end-of-course exam scores, and they've typically been on what is known as a STAY9 grading system. The students would get a score of 1 through 9. Standard Belker distribution, normalized data across the country, 5 being the national average. 6 and above, a score of 6 and above is historically what we've been striving for, because that is what affords the student the opportunity to earn and apply for college credit through Rochester Institute of Technology, which is then transferable to whatever institution that they might attend. So like the MCAS, Project Lead the Way has completely changed their testing and score-reporting system. So this is, the handout that I've given you is the new score-reporting system. It's on a range of 100 to 600. And they've added a moniker. It used to be basic, proficient, and advanced. Scores of, historically, scores of 1 through 3 were basic. Scores of 4, 5, 6, and 7 were proficient, and scores of 8 and 9 were advanced. We sort of lost clarity on what the college credit threshold will be. I don't know if it'll be on the high end of accomplished or strictly in the distinguished category. That information's forthcoming from the institutions like WPI and Rochester that do formulate those college credit thresholds. So stay tuned on that. As you can see, they've gone to a four-tiered system as well. They've known them as novice, practiced, accomplished, and distinguished. For guidance, last year, they did sort of, to use Eddie's term, equipresentile the data. They did send us a STAY9 score equivalency chart. So we did some homework on that. And approximately 87% of our students would have scored in the proficient or advanced sector, which is an incredible number. So if you look at the new system here, again, you've got scores of 100 through 600. They've gone ahead and changed their testing entirely. It's more scenario-based testing. So the students would be presented with a problem, and then would be asked four, five, six follow-up questions about the problem. And it could be, it could be math-based, but have an ethics question or a collaboration-style question. It's all geared around the P21 skills that we're trying to enforce as well. So the whole testing structure has changed. So there's between 4 and 6 clusters per academic discipline. So on the second page, you'll see the breakdown. The bluish color there are the engineering areas. The grayscale colors are the computer science areas. And then the red is the biomedical track. So at BBT, we currently offer the engineering track, so the blue courses. And we are in the second year of implementing the gray courses through our information technology program. I believe we have Computer Science Essentials and Computer Science Principles currently with Ms. Cunningham getting trained in implementing cybersecurity next school year. So that being said, we haven't administered any end-of-course exams in the IT track yet. This will be the first year that we do proceed with that. But we have administered exams in aerospace engineering, civil engineering and architecture, computer integrated manufacturing, digital electronics, Introduction to Engineering Design, and Principles of Engineering. And under each one of those, you'll see the skill clusters and specifically what the students are being rated on. They do receive a very in-depth score report and how they scored in those particular areas, 1 through 6. And then that score is extrapolated into a 1 to 600 number. So the final piece of the puzzle there, the next page is what I provided you. You'll see multiple sections. So Introduction to Engineering Design is listed twice. That means we had multiple shops participating in that. Same with Civil Engineering and Architecture and Digital Electronics. So I've just labeled them as 1 and 2. What's striking to notice is that across the board, we have zeros in the novice category. Not a single student out of 157 exams given scored in the novice, on the novice level. In the practice level, we had 14 students out of 157 exams, so that's just under 9%. So leaving the bulk of it, 90-ish percent of our students scoring in the accomplished or distinguished category, which I just, I think is fantastic. That's a fantastic number. You'll see there, under Civil Engineering and Architecture, I put a little asterisk. And also next to Digital Electronics, there are two asterisks. That means that student in Civil Engineering and Architecture got a 600. And in Digital Electronics, there were two 600s on the exam. So again, fantastic news. Historically, I have the charts all the way back to when I started doing this. We've been doing testing for several years now. I think goes back to 14, 15 school year. I think goes back to fourteen, fifteen school year. So since that time, we've administered five hundred and twelve different Project Lead the Way exams, and three hundred and twelve of them have resulted in college credit. So it's roughly sixty, sixty-ish percent. So again, fantastic work. And as we get more information about the new college credit equivalency and the threshold for that, I'll be sure to communicate it, but I think my ninety seconds are up.
Power bad.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Matt, does this also align itself with the industry-recognized credentials?
Sure, so part of the curriculum, for example, introduction to engineering design, is written around the use of Autodesk Inventor. We have a relationship with CertiPort, which allows our students to take the credential in the exam for Inventor. We also operate for AutoCAD and for Revit. The civil engineering and architecture course utilizes the Revit software, so the students have the opportunity to get the credential in both of those through the Project Lead the Way platform. I'm unfamiliar of credentials at this point on the IT side, but I'm sure it is a foundational curriculum or precursor to their Cisco and their networking and all of that sort of thing. Certainly can't hurt. But I know directly we utilize the Inventor and Revit certification.
Good alignment.
Does Chairman make a suggestion that there's incredibly rare instances where we had a few students who scored perfect six hundreds that we'd invite them next month for a student recognition? I agree with that. Pretty rare accomplishment.
We have one, one graduate, he's, he's since gone to WPI, but historically, looking at his scores, he's scored a nine on every single exam with the exception of one, I think he got an eight. But to date, he has, he's been the highest achieving student that I've seen. The other two that got the six hundreds this year, I believe, are now, are currently juniors in engineering. As a reward for them, I had them unpack the new food three D printer, the Foodie, and get that up and running last week. So we printed, successfully printed mashed potatoes.
Any other questions on ten point two? All right, moving on to the homecoming. I think our students, when they came and gave their report, as you can see, covered most of it and did a fine job. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that they said. When they said they were thankful for facilities, and I know Doc even made a comment about it. I'm not sure we made it clear to what we were talking about. Right before our pep rally, they had a rather significant breach in one of our heater cores up on the roof, and it started a literal downpour in the comp center. Right, so of all of the places in the building, we were about to assemble all the students. We had a fairly massive flood. Between HVAC facilities, all hands on deck, we went about the business of not only shutting off the water supply, but also getting into the ceiling and cleaning up an awful lot of water out the floor in a big hurry. I think fair to say, most schools would have canceled the pep rally. We haven't been able to pull it off. We got it all dried up. Got the pep rally going, and one of the first features of the pep rally, the whole facilities department came out and all the high fives and the kids all cheered wildly. We acknowledged that, once again, you know, we come together and pull through, we come through. Pretty, pretty, made a little bit of flair this year, but same spirit. The other thing that was mentioned, but it, but kind of no detail around it, Logan Keith mentioned that the bonfire was postponed. He didn't mention why, that was a triple E mosquito situation. We still had to receive that first hard frost, and so we've opted to move that to another weekend, one of our football games or so. We will, we still have the event this year, we're just waiting for it to get cold. Right, I think we were saying Thanksgiving, maybe for free Thanksgiving.
At this rate, we're just not getting any frost.
Whenever it gets cold. I have a feeling it will. So we'll, we'll see if we can still do that event, honor the tickets and everything that students have. Otherwise, you know, it was your typical Valley Tech homecoming with all of the traditional events and activities, very well attended, as was previously mentioned, spirit abounding everywhere, and good time had by all. Do you have any further questions about homecoming? Moving into general advisory dinner, just a status update. We're still getting our SVPs. Right now, we have about a hundred and fifty RSPs to dinner, that's on par or trend or normal, if you will, for this point in time. Certainly, you're all welcome, and please just let us know if you're coming on October thirtieth. And today, or this year's theme is a whole harvest. So I would imagine lots of delicious squash, turkey, and things of that type. You're all welcome to attend and sit at our school committee admin table. Certainly looking forward, as always, to our general advisory dinner. Any questions on ten point four? Last couple items I have are a couple of out-of-state field trips. The first is a visual arts field trip. You'll find in your packets on November twenty-first.
That looks like a pretty interesting trip down to Haverhill.
Yeah. Mr. Plour in the art department want to take basically a trip down there to take a look at the creative aspects. Also bringing some of the multimedia staff with them, school bus required. Basically a day trip, they'll be back by one o'clock or so, and looking for your support.
I'll make a second.
One of them got the motion, the other one got the second. Saying none, Eric, none, all of us in favor of supporting the trip to Haverhill, say hi.
Hi.
All of the photos. Motion carries, next up, the Disney trip.
The second trip is a Disney trip for robotics and electronics students. We have included a full itinerary of Mr. Norton, but also Mr. Lewis, and also Mr. Lehner worked quite a bit on the proposal. You'll see the detailed itinerary on the back pages. They will also be taking some of the workshops presented down at Disney, which is part of their educational series. It includes the workshops themselves, and then they also go and apply them around the park as part of that workshop. It's a fairly quick trip, January twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. I think the students are missing two days of school for this one, if I'm not mistaken. And they are also funding it themselves through both fundraisers and student contribution.
Much, much is made and second to approve the trip to Disney World. Questions, comments, discussion?
You know if they'll be going underground?
I believe it is part of that.
I think it's part of the classes, on the two, the two different.
That's a great experience, I did that years ago.
I was gonna say, I was reading through the itinerary, they're getting in-depth, they're doing inner workings of things, not just.
There's a whole underground tour, this is two workshops you're taking, but I think it incorporates some aspects of going underground and looking at some of the mechanisms.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause the one that caught my attention, because I like to ride, was the Tower of Terror, that they're getting, they're going inside machinery. Actually getting to see the working machinery. Which is, seems pretty cool.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Questions, comments, any other? Saying none here, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the photos, motions carries. They can go to Disney in January, hopefully there's a frost by then.
I think that's all I have for you. Thank you, folks.
Moving on, Dr. Chris Patrick.
Anthony, thank you very much. Item eleven point one, you've seen the delineation of subcommittees, what are subcommittee agendas or calendar was distributed earlier. So they'll commence their meeting, and the other meeting, the other subgroups are as identical. Please speak to the chair in the hall if there are any changes to this. Any questions? And then moving on. Item eleven point two, we have this document here, annual report. Also provided electronically to our town. It's been, newer version has been used over the past several years. See the picture of the superintendent, that might have been when he was fifty-five, but anyway. But it's intended to be an effective summary of the return on investment, and we'll provide any copies that you might need. Any questions on that? And then we'll be on. Item eleven point two. The October one enrollments on a town-by-town basis provide a snapshot, but not an unknown, but a definite empirical reference point that drives the statutory assessments that are controlled by the regional agreement. The state has a great deal of control over minimum obligation numbers that impact the assessments. Here you can see the plus or minus for the in-district situation. Where a town will witness an increase of greater than five percent, the town manager, the finance committee chair, the liaison from the finance committee to Valley Tech will all receive a communication from them, putting them on advance alert of that change. For towns with a minus number relative to distribution, in the event you're asked, I pretty much would suggest you, you encourage the financial planners of the town to level fund on the previous year. It's probably a prudent way to start the process, and then eventually, as we finalize our numbers, we'll be able to give them specific numbers. What do we know? Any questions on this? So now moving on. We have the, we've been alerted that while the school committee approved, but under conditions that it would be assured of the safety of the students, that the charity trip that made it, there's also donations by Mr. Koopman and others, has been canceled for the safety of the students. So they indicated they would not feel comfortable, and they would not be taking this trip. So in good faith, they wanted to make sure you do that because you conditionally approved it. Now that the condition has been, has not been addressed, you will not be going. Any questions? They are looking for alternative activities that are consistent with the charitable action. Seeing no questions, moving on. Eleven point five, as you'll note, from one of the messages and communications that came in, we've been asked to be supportive of former coach Janzik, former instructor, Mr. Janzik, had to have one of the fundraisers in his recognition that comes up on the data indicated Monday, the twenty-first. Just over in Rhode Island, and tickets are available, otherwise you can acquire them through this process. A number of staff members, including myself, have already bought a ticket for this, and we do hope to attend. Any questions on that? Item eleven point six, as I believe the committee is aware, and some committee members participated, as an extension of our social studies program, we had a rear battle in war reenactment on the dates identified. Students were bused from the school on the Friday. It was a tremendous turnout on the Saturday. I got to go over on Friday and Sunday myself, a number of staff members, of course, were there, various parts of this presentation. The compliments from the Daniels Farm people and from the history groups from Blackstone Amendment and others, very complimentary, and the feedback was very positive. Once again, Ed Evans, when he wasn't calculating MCAS results, took the lead on this, but it was across the curriculum effort, and it's generally all we do everything here. And the, this effort was funded with two grants, which were listed in the Curtis's list, if you saw those. Basically a seventy-seven hundred one and another one for about twenty thousand in total. They paid for all aspects of this. It didn't require matching contributions. So we were able to do this without asking the district to pony up more dollars, create a great opportunity for outdoor classroom partnership with Daniels Farm. Blackstone Amendment, but in Blackstone. Not Amendment, near Amendment. So we take great pride in that. So it was a great activity, we thank you for your support. Any questions? Rumor is we'll do the Battle of Eighteen Twelve at some future date.
It was interesting to note, you're watching redcoats, the Yankees, and you're trying to picture how things would go, and then you hear the reconnaissance drone coming over your head. You know, with the cameras, it's like, took us back to the future for a little bit.
Also had a volunteer historian who announced the battles, and gave you a great deal of insight. Distinguishing that which the kids may have seen on various movies and TV shows, which were fiction and not really factual. Great learning experience.
Been very joyful.
Item eleven point seven, several committee members have commented or raised a question in the new Ed Reform Act since nineteen ninety-three. That is advancing right now through the House of Representatives, and there, it's already gone through the Senate. There are two summary documents that give you some insight on this, and they're identified, eleven point seven. We receive regular summary conversions of what's happening. The second document came through the yard association and mess association, so they're available to gain more insight. This is in motion, though it's not really confirmed at this time. We'll continue to watch very closely and position ourselves to access any data. Under the current plan, we would receive very dollars more for students. And that's about it.
That's it?
That's about it. Yeah, there may be an increase in competition. So let me not leave that alone, okay? There's a possibility of chapter seventy-one, or on the chapter seventy side, they say you have that. It is focused to urban needs, and the urbanists have the political power of the state up, and they use it to drive significantly dollars. They have, they face significant challenges, we wish them the great best, do a good review, thank you. That is one of the reasons why we're so aggressive in pursuing other grants that we are eligible, that are not driven through this process. Any questions on that? We'll continue to keep you posted as it makes its way through the legislature, through the joint committees, and eventually the government. Eleven point eight, there's a copy of the award letter received from one of our organizations, the New England School Developmental Council. This is the second grant we received from them. When and if we do, you know, Battle of Eighteen Twelve, we probably will go to them for another, another piece, some additional stuff. Any questions on that? Item eleven point nine A, the, this same organization that funded this held their fall conference in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I went up for, at their expense, for an evening and a day of the conference, and then came back. Another opportunity for professional development. Any questions on that? Moving on. We recently, as I mentioned, have regular visitors come in, two examples of that in the last cycle since we last met. It was the National Defense University, brought in their retired military people from across the world, and it's great interaction of those who serve their country and the interaction of our students. Had a request from a colleague from Quavo Regional, an academic regional system or a non-vocational regional system, where it's a superintendent and its high school principal, and they wanted to spend half a day here looking at, in particular, at our welding programs, manufacturing programs, and health assisting programs. So we gave them a thorough tour, answered their questions, got a work and lunch. They ate the lunch and sent a nice notice of appreciation, so we wish them the great best. That school system is in the Pathfinder Regional Vocational School District, that system, located in the Palmer. But Pathfinder serves. system, located in the pond room, but Pathfinder serves Walmart, so this is like their Blackstone Mill or Mendon up to Pathfinder. I alerted this our colleague, my colleague at Pathfinder, Jerry Pace, that visitors from this district came down to, you know, just to keep everybody informed. Any questions on this? Seeing none, moving on. That concludes your report. Yes, it does.
All right. Next up, new business. Does anyone in the school committee have any business to bring forward tonight? Seeing none. Next is the executive committee, as always are available, if you would like a copy, just let pop. No? Next, regularly scheduled school committee meeting is going to be November 14th. We do have an executive session on the books. We have a same motion. We have an executive session. Motion to go to an executive session does require a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 All right. Before we actually break to go into a roll call, we will be coming out of the meeting. The sole piece of business is to determine, decide whether or not we're going to release executive session, executive minutes that are going to be approved or not in the executive session and then that will be the, then the adjournment will be the sole remaining business that, just whether you call it schedule or not, it'll be present on the backside of the executive session, recommendation on the decision to release.
Not to release at this time. Yeah, the other thing I would mention that, to see what the ruling is, as you can see, the hosted executive session also includes a very brief conversation at this juncture relative to non-collective intellectual activity, okay?
So we have the motion was made, second and approved to go into executive session because the session, an open session would be detrimental to the school district. Will take about five minutes, that way the, our videographer can hear that. Thank you.